Good evening, gators and gentlemen. The August fifteenth Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of the city of Longview is now called to order. I'm going to ask Commissioner Brian Dahlberg to please lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, if you will.
Will do.
Remember the people of Hawaii, if you will. I'm sure that there's the people in Hawaii.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, if you would bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you so much for this time that we get to gather, and we pray that you bless our meeting as we do the work for the city and just be with us during our discussions and decisions. And, Lord, we pray for our fellow citizens in Hawaii and the trauma and the troubles that they're going through, and we just pray that you bless them and their recovery and us to your service. Amen. All right, if you would. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting that was held in May. Has, no, it was actually held in June. I've lost the month. July. Sorry about that. Anyhow, has everyone had a chance to look over the minutes? Anyone have any changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a half second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, they are approved. We have the citizen comment section next. I did not receive any speaker cards concerning the citizen comments. Is there anyone in the audience that this is not part of the regular agenda where we're looking at zoning changes, but just comments that citizens like to make? I see none, so we'll move on. Item six is the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are plaits that meet the requirements of the city of Longview subdivision ordinances. They'll be approved by one vote unless any one of the commissioners or anyone in the audience, the public, or anybody else would like to remove for discussion. Anyone want the consent agenda item removed? I see none, so I will entertain a motion for approval of consent agenda items.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Say.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Moving to the regular agenda, the purpose of the meeting is to hear all of the pertinent testimony of those in support and those in opposition to applications that are being brought before the commission this evening. This is the first of two public hearings required for the approval of a change in zoning. The commission also considers plaits. The procedure for the public hearing will have the staff telling what is asked to be changed, the applicant, and then the general public, those in support and opposition. If you are part of a large group, instead of everyone getting up and saying the same thing, if you just perhaps have a spokesman that can kind of condense it and limit your talk to about five minutes, if you will. The ones that are approved tonight will go to the city council for a date to be determined, either this month or next month. We're now to item A of the regular agenda. Angela, if you'll read it, please.
Yes, sir. Consider application P twenty-three dash oh-six, Shalom Gardens subdivision filed by Hinson and Wallen Ventures LLC to plat approximately seven point four eight nine acres of abstract two sixty-two, a Jordan survey tracks twenty and twenty-one dash oh-eight. Section two into twenty-five residential lots located on the north side of Eden Drive west of Alpine Road. The applicant is plating this property into twenty-five residential lots located on the north side of Eden Drive and west of Alpine Road. The applicant has not finished installing all of the required infrastructure or provided the estimate for the required infrastructure with a letter of credit prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Staff does recommend a conditional approval with the following requirement, that the applicant either provides an estimate and a letter of credit for the infrastructure or installs the infrastructure. Once all those conditions are met, the plat would be considered approved. I'd be happy to answer your questions at this time.
Any of the commissioners have any questions for Angela?
Is there a minimum lot size?
Yes, so the property is zoned SF six, so a minimum lot size of four thousand square feet, forty foot wide, eighty foot deep, and minimum house size of a thousand square feet.
Any other questions from the commissioners? This is just approving a plat, so I will entertain a motion at this time?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion to approve?
With the condition?
With the conditions.
With the conditions, sorry.
Thank you.
Second. And a second. Did you get both of them, Angela?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Regular agenda, item B. Angela?
Thank you. Consider application RP twenty-three dash oh-five, Lost Creek Business Park, Unit Three, filed by Boxwood Group LLC and RBR Interest LLC to replat approximately three point nine eight, three point nine eight six acres of lots three and four, Lost Creek Business Park, Unit Three, into four residential lots located on the west side of Technology Center west of Robert Circle. So the applicant is requesting to replat these lots into four residential lots located on the west side of Technology Center. The applicant has not installed the required infrastructure or provided the estimate for the required infrastructure with a letter of credit prior to this meeting. Staff recommends a conditional approval with the following requirement, that the applicant provide an estimate and letter of credit for the infrastructure or installs the infrastructure. Once all those conditions are met, the plat would be considered approved. I'd be happy to answer your questions at this time.
Commissioners, anyone have any questions?
I have a question about the neighboring lots around there. Are they zoned the same way?
Yes, sir. So you actually saw this case maybe a couple months back. They rezoned, yeah, they rezoned this property from office to single family four and across the street. They did the same thing, I think, the last year.
That's what I thought.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve with the conditions.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With the conditions, as outlined by Angela.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? It passes. We're now to item C of the regular agenda. These are actually asking for zoning changes, so we'll be asking for a public hearing on these. So Angela, item C.
Yes, sir. Public hearing will be held to consider application S twenty-three dash oh-nine filed by Teresa L. May requesting a specific use permit to allow for one-family dwelling in heavy commercial zoning district for abstract four, IC Skeller and Survey, tract ten, section one, located at fifty-nine eleven Old Highway eighty. So the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for a single-family dwelling in heavy commercial zoning district located in Old Highway eighty. A specific use permit is required for a single-family dwelling in heavy commercial zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. There is a single-family dwelling located to the east and to the west of this property, and the applicant would like to build a single-family dwelling on this site. Old Highway eighty is classified as a collector and is maintained by the city. This type of development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future land use map and surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer your questions at this time.
Questions of Angela?
That's just like a barn or outbuilding or something we're seeing in the photo?
I believe it's a mobile home, which I believe the applicant is proposing to remove and build, stick built.
Oh, okay.
At that site.
The applicant is here. Ms. May, would you like to address it or say if anyone has any questions of the applicant? Commissioners, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, unless the commissioners have any other questions? I want to entertain.
I have a question about the zoning around it again. You showed something there that looked like SF four, single-family four around it. Is that right?
There are some single-family four, I believe, to the north when we get to the zoning map. Yes, sir.
So all the blue would be considered single-family four?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Did I get a motion and a second?
Not yet.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Passes. Thank you, Ms. May. Item D. Angela?
Thank you. Public hearing will be held to consider application Z twenty-three dash twenty filed by RBR Interest LLC requesting a rezone from agricultural zoning district to office zoning district for abstract one seventy-seven, William Robinson Survey, tract one oh-three, section four, located at the northeast corner of Hawkins Parkway and Bill Owens Parkway. The applicant is requesting a rezone of this property located here at the northeast corner of Hawkins Parkway and Bill Owens from agricultural seen here in this green to single, or to office zoning districts. Sorry about that. Hawkins Parkway and Bill Owens Parkway are classified as minor arterial roadways, and both are maintained by the city of Longview. This type of development is appropriate along these roadways as long as access management is followed. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future land use map seen here. Therefore, it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions of Angela, please.
Would there, because that's a busy corner, would there just be one entrance on, entrance exit on Bill Owens, or do we know?
We don't know yet. We haven't gotten that far into the process. This is the first step, the zoning. Our city engineering and the engineering staff will look at driveways because it is a busy, like you said, it is a very busy intersection, and so they will look at the driveway placements and determine appropriate locations.
Your future land use map, that showed retail as your?
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm.
Angela, would you kind of tell us what all is under office zoning?
I will. So you're asking what is allowed in office zoning?
Correct.
So what our current Unified Development Code, which is our UDC, allows, it does allow apartments in office zoning. It allows for a nursing home in office zoning. It does allow a retirement community. An art gallery is allowed in office. Of course, an office building is allowed in office. A hospital is allowed in office. Daycares are allowed in office zoning. Churches are allowed in office zoning, but churches are allowed in any zoning district by right. That's a federal law. Colleges are allowed in office zoning. Public schools are allowed in any zoning district. Urgent care is allowed in office zoning district. And a grocery store, it's a grocery convenience store, so it's limited to six thousand square feet. That is allowed in office zoning district, but there's, it does not allow for gasoline sales. So those are all the uses that are allowed in office zoning district.
Okay. Any questions of Angela before we move on? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask for the applicant, Mr. Ramsey, to please come to the mic, speak into it.
Thank you.
State your name and address.
Jeff Ramsey, number two, Stone Ridge Trail, Longview, Texas. I live right off of Hawkins Parkway, just up Little Ways, and the interest in doing this is to put an office building. I'm not doing apartments, not doing all those other facilities or anything else. Intent, purpose is to put an office building there. So now, depending on, once I get with the engineers, on which section will be best, whether it be on the south side, wherever it's most conducive to it, or on the west side, over on the Bill Owens side. Not sure which side of those are going to be most conducive. There is a very large creek, if you will, a lot of ravines and stuff running through there in different directions, so it does limit the space in the area there. Office building intent is to be somewhere around thirty-five hundred square feet, and of course, I'll need some parking space as well. So that's what the intent is and what my plans are with the?
Would it be a single story?
Yes, sir.
You proposing office suites or just one?
No, just one. One office. That's correct.
Angela, what's the parking requirement for that square footage?
For an office building, parking requirement is one parking space for every three hundred square feet.
You're proposing thirty-five hundred?
About thirty-five maximum. That's correct. We're from three thousand to thirty-five hundred. Again, just depending on how engineering looks at it and the final plans come out to be on it. That's correct.
And then just to go back to what Natasha was asking on the proposed driveway, is there, what's, is there a proposed width that we have to have on commercial in that zoning for him? Is there a proposed size for the driveway so that he could possibly have on both sides?
Commercial driveways do have a minimum standard. I don't know what the, I can't remember off the top of my head. It depends on?
Are you proposing entry on both sides?
No, ma'am. No, because there's no, quite honestly, there's a creek that runs almost diagonally probably through that lot, and therefore there's, you don't really have access from the north side over to, or excuse me, the south side over to the west side, you know, to combine them, unless you do a lot of engineering work, obviously. I'm not intending on having to plow hundreds of thousands of dollars in there for engineering work and dirt work and everything else that may or may not work. My total intent is only to have one single office in there.
And engineering will get with him on drainage and detention on that lot?
Through site plan review, so through the development process, they'll look at drainage, driveways, access.
The other, the other plan is to leave as much greenery and as many trees as I can there, so if I don't need to take any of the trees down and, you know, except for the pad area and the parking lot area and stuff, that's what my intent is.
The creek intact in the area like that?
Yes.
It is a visual.
That is correct. Yeah. So.
Any other questions of Mr. Ramsey? Subject to recall. We'll dismiss you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience like to speak in favor at this time? Any other, any, anyone else? At this time, I will ask anyone who would like to speak against it, please come to the mic, state your name.
Hi, my name's Joseph Darden. My address is twenty sixteen West Hawkins Parkway, directly across from where Mr. Ramsey plans to put this. The map that you showed earlier, everything around us is residential. I just believe that an office building in the middle of all this residential would, I'm sure Mr. Ramsey's going to put a beautiful building, I believe it would be a nice or, and also just concerned for everyone's property taxes. I'm not sure how that would affect it. I would think negatively, but I just don't think that would be a good idea, and I hope the, this committee would consider that. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Please approach the mic.
Hello, my name is Zach Gregory. I live on, in Hillcrest Estates, just north of this. I agree that I think most of this is residential. It's a very busy intersection. We see accidents on Bill Owens and Hawkins regularly, and bringing in more traffic is going to cause, I think, more problems there. And also, we have had concerns with higher traffic and more break-ins and theft in the area. The more people we see in the area, the more of that we see. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Please approach the mic. Any of the commissioners have any questions of any of the people who have spoken?
The two gentlemen that spoke against it, what would you propose you do with a kind of a piece of property that's got issues with, you know, with usability and drainage and being on the corner? Is it, are you, is somebody going to build a house there? Is it, is it a lot for a house? Is it doable? Would you build a house on it?
Would I? Yes, absolutely. If the land was more affordable, I think it's a little overpriced for what you're dealing with. That's in my opinion. I have two acres on the north side. We built, we built our house, you know, quite a bit back and have basically an acre and a half behind us, and we love it, and I think that you could. I think rezoning it to single-family would be a good idea as well, but you'd have to find the right developer. And that whole area is, it's single-family, you know, on both sides of Bill Owens and
Anyone else have any questions of the speakers? Any questions of Angela or the staff? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Well, I got to close the public hearing. I'm sorry, I closed the public hearing at this time. Now I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous vote. I'm sorry, we got to get one out of the?
Yes, sir.
Out of the hot box.
Oh, that's fine. All right, item E, a public hearing will be held to consider application Z twenty-three dash twenty-one filed by Scott Watts requesting a rezone from general retail zoning district to townhome zoning district for all of block seven, new city block five thirty-nine, Valley View subdivision, located at sixteen oh one Alpine Road. So the applicant is requesting a rezone of this entire block, which used to be Valley View School, from general retail to townhome zoning district. The applicant would like to build a townhome development on this block. Valley View, Valley Drive and Ben Street are classified as local streets and are maintained by the city of Longview. Alpine Road is classified as a minor arterial roadway and is maintained by Tech dot. This type of development is appropriate along these roadways as long as access management is followed. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Is the old school building still there?
Yes, sir, it is still there. The applicant is proposing to demolish it in order to do this townhome development.
Any other questions?
Was it minimum square feet per townhome was eight hundred?
Yes, let me get that, but I'm pretty sure it is.
Is the applicant in the?
Yes.
Audience?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything to add to it, please? If you'll step forward, in case we have questions here.
What is the proposed square footage?
We have a drawing, Angela.
And it's in your packet. I'm sorry, it's not in the PowerPoint presentation, but it is in your packet.
We've met with the, with Angela and our team, and we've set forth all of the, all the city codes and everything, and all of that is followed.
Well, it's in your minimum floor area. Do you have a proposed, do you already have architectural drawings?
We have some architectural drawings.
So what's the proposed square footage for the entire townhome?
They're going to be a thousand square feet per.
Two-bedroom, two-bath, two, what?
Four bedrooms. There are going to be four bedrooms for two stories, and then they're going to be booked in by one-story, two bedrooms, so we can have a mixed family, so there'll be elderly.
Shared walls?
Shared walls. So four units, some are four units and some are five units, and those are consistent with the townhome codes.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Ma'am, if you have questions, you need to come up to the microphone, please. Thank you.
Let me go ahead and open the public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
So the public hearing is open. Anyone like to speak in favor? Are you speaking in favor of it, ma'am?
I am, yes.
Okay. Go ahead. State your name and address, please.
I'm speaking against it.
You're fine.
Okay, my name is Angel Brooks, and I live at fourteen thirteen Valley Drive. And what I would like to know, with him demolishing this building, will he be tenting it off due to the asbestos that's in it?
So yes, he will have to abate the asbestos, and he'll have to provide a report to the city of Longview stating that fact. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in favor? Approach the mic, please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Juan Rojas. I live off, me and my wife live off fourteen oh four Valley Drive, and my question, being this built, we live literally across the street from Valley, from the Valley View, and my question is, again, we don't know if this is going to raise up the taxes or not, you know? That's just a question, but we don't, we're against that. And my other question is, or my next, where I want to go with this is, we've had break-ins in our neighborhood as well due to the trail where there's homeless people that are breaking into our homes now, and so we got to kind of be careful and watch each other's back here with the family and kids. So would this be a government identity townhome? Because right now, we're having to be careful, and right now, the neighborhood is peaceful right now, so we just don't want any, any, any more problems. That's where I'm going.
Do you want to respond to that?
Sure.
I respect the concerns of the residents, addressing first the abatement. We're going to have a team that goes in and abate it, obviously by city code, and there's, I don't know the process of tenting it or not, but it has to be done by code. Property taxes, that's out of my control. I have anything, I don't know anything about that, but these will be all for-sale units. Our intent is to gate the entire area. We're not, we're not trying to bring down the area, we're trying to build up the area. I presented a number of schematics and how these units would look to Angela and her team, and I don't know if she had those for public viewing, but I think we're going to put up a very good product and that the city will be proud of.
A question, how do you plan on selling shared wall units? And I'm just asking from my own knowledge here, being different, don't they each need to be on their own lot to be sold individually?
They are on their own lots, so.
But they're all shared walls?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I think it's very advantageous of you to go into the area and go in to do this project, but I also think, I'm sorry, my phone is ringing. Again, I think it's advantageous of you to go into this area and do this project, but I would like you to consider the square footage, especially for four bedrooms in one thousand square foot. I think it's already going to be a very tight space, again, with what's being proposed, and I just think it would be a good idea to maybe just take a look at those square footages again, especially if they're for families and you're trying to encourage a smaller micro-community. I think that might be something that you might want to look at. Also, in terms of green space, I don't necessarily see, we're proposing that, is that going to be along the new streets or?
Well, there's, there are requirements by the city where we have to?
Absolutely, but we don't see the streetscape, so you're here, that's why I'm asking.
Okay. Architectural, I can't speak to that because I don't have it by memory. There was, we have Johnson and Pace, who's actually doing the schematics and all the floor plans and, and the layout. Going back to your question of square footage, that 1,000 square foot is the minimum size. We're going to have several different sizes, we're going to have two, three, and four. So there is a list of things that we can discuss, I don't know how much time we have to do that, but we are taking advantage of the space that we have and the current market. There's a, there are a lot of homes that are doing smaller scales, especially if you look directly north of us, there, there are very small homes. Ours is going to be much bigger than those. And I, I really think, and I know none of us have the advantage of seeing the floor plan, but I, I think we're going to be pleased with the, the end product.
Right, I'm sure we are. We, we haven't seen the site plan either, but, you know, again, we really want to encourage some green space. I mean, just from a developer's, you know, point of view, I really want you to consider that. And then, of course, you want to max out the space of where you have and get the most bang for your buck. But again, we just want to think about square footages and, you know what I mean, and providing good space for our families.
We'd definitely consider that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else have any comments or questions of the applicant? Anyone in the audience like to speak in favor? Approach the mic. Any in opposition? Wait a minute. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Carrie Hitz, and I live at 109 Ben Street. I'm directly right across from the front entrance of the school. I guess some of my questions are, is what direction is this going to be built? Where are the driveways going to be? How many units are there going to be? What's the price of these going to be? What, you know, the market of that? That's kind of what I'm, and I'm, and one of my questions was the taxes as well. But how many units will there be? Oh, sure. I have a lot of questions. I don't, I just got to let.
You want to address them all?
No, I would, some of them would be how you answer, I guess.
Okay. So let's deal with the, I think the way I remember the questions. So we're going to have a private street going from the north to the south. That's going to be two streets. The units will be back to back. The amount right now in, in the plans are 40 because they want to see how many we can fit on the lot. I don't plan to develop 40. My goal is around 36. I think the last question she had was price. My price point is going to be per market. We know that the market changes all the time. Right now, the entry point, price point will be around $250,000 for the four, I mean, for the three bedroom. For the four bedroom, we would have to see what the market yields. So don't, don't know how to answer those questions, but there, we have to work with all, within the numbers. So it costs a certain dollar to build them, and then we set our price according to what the cost to build is.
Thank you for that. Okay, so I guess I just need, I'm trying to understand, so you're going to build 40, 36 possibly, on this? Okay. So are these going to be built like in pods, what I'm talking about? Where are you going to drive in? How much traffic is going to be on Ben? Ben, most of us live on Bend and Valley right here that are here, and so when you turn on Ben, that used to be years ago, a one-way street when the school was there. So that was a one-way street, so that's kind of why those markings are still there on the road. So I guess what I'm saying is, how, how are, are they going to be built in the middle of the property? They're going to be built around the edges? Is there going to be driveways coming in and out everywhere? Because right now, you know, we, we have short driveways and we all usually back out, most of us. So I guess I'm concerned about 36 more households living there, say some of them have two cars or more. That's a lot of cars. That's a lot of traffic in that little area. And I don't know, that just seems like that would be a very congested little spot there. And talking about the crime, yes, my car, George, my neighbor, called me the other night at 1:30 in the morning because somebody was out there trying to steal my car in my driveway. They had the doors open. So I will tell you, there is a lot of stuff going on over there, and that's not the first time. Few years ago, somebody tried to steal it and, so there is a lot of crime over there. I don't know if you know that, but I'm just telling you that. But that just seems like that would be a lot of congestion. When you're talking 36, 40 households in that little bitty street, would there be driveways coming off into Alpine, coming into Ben, coming into Valley? I mean, I guess.
So I think Mr. Watts, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, but he was talking about there's, there will be two proposed new streets going through that block when he demolishes that house or that, that school. And so he's going to be, he's proposing two streets going north and south across that block, and most of those houses will face those two, two new streets.
So we'll get the backs. We'll be facing the backs.
Yes, ma'am.
They should be backing into those shared driveways, coming onto Valley and coming onto Ben. There's two entrances and exits, correct?
Correct.
One, there's two streets that are going to be coming through, entering on Valley. You can enter on Valley or enter off Ben. And that way, those cars, because the garages should front those streets, they should back onto those shared streets, and then they should exit out of the main street.
But this is also a very preliminary layout, you know, our engineers have not reviewed it. You know, it's just an exhibit, that's what's in the packet, but he is proposing two streets.
Okay. But I still think that'd be a lot of congestion. That's a lot of households right there in that little area. Just my opinion.
Yeah, it is, and our engineers have looked at it, but it's not enough that it warrants a traffic study, because it's not, that is not, it is a lot of households for you, but when our engineers look at it, it does not warrant a traffic study.
And like my other neighbor was talking about, it's, it's kind of peace and quiet. You know, we hear the train, we do have people, we have to watch, we do watch each other's backs.
Yes, ma'am.
Over there. But that's, that's a lot. On our little street, you know, you notice there's only just a few little houses right there. Mine's one, two, three, four. We actually have five houses, and then John's on the corner, his actually faces Valley. So we only have five houses right there on Ben. So you're talking about a lot in our front door. And that'll be a lot of our peace and quiet and things of that nature, but, okay, well thank you, I appreciate your time.
Kate, you need to fill out a speaker's card, please. Anyone else that has spoken, if you didn't fill out a speaker's card, please do it. She'll give you one back at the back there. Yes, sir.
Okay, my last statement. Right now, the way the property exists, I'm very much aware of the break-ins. Every time I go over there, somebody's been in the building. So as, as it currently sits now, I think it's more of a hazard to the community. I think having it developed, there's safety in numbers. Longview is growing, you have to put the people somewhere. And, and hopefully, this is a, a really good option to beautify the city. Where she's considering crime, we're not emptying the prisons and putting people in there. We're getting qualified people who can have a loan and to make the community a better community.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Yes, sir.
Did you not allude to being a gated community?
Yes, sir.
How many entrances and exits are there going to be?
Total of four.
Total of four?
Mm-hmm.
So all of the traffic is not dumping out on one individual?
No, sir.
House or street or?
No, sir.
Right?
Correct.
I mean, it's being dispersed, it's being diverted around out of four entrances and exits.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else like to speak either for or against this?
Yeah, Zach Gregory here again. I actually have a rental in the area, did not realize exactly where this was at off of Huey Drive there. I'm in favor of, of redeveloping that area. I think that, I think that it's a great neighborhood and can definitely use some newer homes in the area. Do you have a zoning of the area, what it looks like?
Yes. So it currently is zone general retail, that whole block, and so general, general retail allows for quite a bit of uses. It allows for apartment complex, it allows for typical retail stores, and so Mr. Watts is asking to go down to a residential use.
And is that what all the blue is?
So all the blue, well, so all the blue is single family four. Mr. Watts is asking for a little denser development, which is townhome zoning district, which provides a, a good transition from that major thoroughfare, Alpine Road, to that single family four zoning district.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else have any comments?
I do, I want to speak to the taxes. Townhomes aren't generally grouped in with single family homes, so that shouldn't affect taxes too much for you guys, and considering our governor just, hopefully, nobody's going to vote against the $100,000 homestead exemption. I don't know who would, but I think our taxes are going to be going down soon anyway, but that, that shouldn't be an issue with townhomes compared to the single family homes that you guys have, so.
Any of the commissioners have any additional questions or comments?
Angela, under the general retail right now, if he was building this project and it was an apartment and he wasn't selling the units, it would be allowed under the general retail zoning.
That's correct, apartment complexes.
So really, the only difference is that he's actually going to be selling these units to homeowners instead of renters, is the reason that he has to go down to?
That is correct. Townhome, they sit on their own separate lots, and so you're selling each lot individually where apartment complex is all on one lot. That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners or anyone in the audience? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Do what?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
While second.
Have a second?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. Sorry, sorry, sir, we missed you. The last item on the agenda is the staff update.
Yes, sir. All items that were presented to planning, to city council were approved, but I do have one more update. If you missed our city of Longview comprehensive plan public meeting that took place at MOD Cobb, please visit our website at longviewtexas.gov/plan. We do want your input on our comprehensive plan, or you can scan the QR code, but please fill out the survey. We do want your input.
And when does that close?
I'm not sure. In a month.
In a month.
Yes. Oh, end of the month, I'm so sorry. End of this month. Yes.